Ability to fix in coordination with our communities. I really believe that that is possible. I believe it is possible for our profession to evolve to better meet its their the the needs of our communities. And I think it's it's imperative that we do so. I don't believe that we should ever be satisfied with the status quo in our line of work. I do believe that it is possible to have accountability and transparency that the that the public is calling for. And I also believe that's not a zero sum proposition and that we can do that while also taking better care of our police officers and helping them stay healthy throughout their careers and and enable them to serve us better in our communities. My vision for the Akron Police Department is an organization that works with its community to make Akron the safest city in the United States. And it's a a vision of a department that respects and safeguards the rights of everyone that it serves. And a department that is a great place for people to work and where people enjoy coming to work every day and can find joy in that work. I think when I look at Akron from outside, I see a very thoughtful and engaged community. I see a very professional and dedicated police department, and I see a place that is ready to make this vision a reality. And so that's where I'm coming from tonight. And I'm really looking forward to our discussion this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief Davis. Next, I'd like to introduce Eric David Hawkins. Posting more than thirty years of experience in law enforcement, Eric Hawkins began his career at the Southfield, Michigan Police Department. During his time in the force, he earned his bachelor's and master's degrees from Central Michigan University, and later earned his Juris Doctor from Western Michigan University, Cooley Law School. From two thousand twelve to two thousand eighteen, he served as Chief of Police of the Southfield, Michigan Police Department, and he currently serves as Chief of Chief of Police in Albany, New York. Chief Hawkins?
Thank you very much, and it's a pleasure being here. And good evening to those who are watching on live stream. And as it was mentioned, I've been in this law enforcement profession for over thirty years, starting off as a police cadet in nineteen ninety and having an opportunity to serve as a police chief in two different cities and two different states. And, you know, I'm a father, I'm a husband, and I'm a brand new grandfather. And so this is a very exciting time for my family. And I'm intrigued with the city of Akron because Akron is very similar to the cities that I've had an opportunity to serve as Chief of Police. Aggressive, diverse, multicultural, multi-ethnic, with elected officials who value and promote and indeed embrace these concepts of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And police departments that are going through this reform and transformation and reimagining a process, a process that is that is much more challenging now because it must occur amid this devastating convergence of of stressors that we're seeing in our urban areas. Things like a an alarming increase in violent crimes that we're seeing in some of our cities. Relations between our police departments and members of our minority communities that has degraded. And recruitment and retention issues, you know, we're not doing enough in law enforcement to to market our industry to our young people that are our prospective recruits and 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 future police officers. And we're not doing nearly enough to retain those who are already here, these these in these these young men and women who are out there on a daily basis. Giving their lives and in in helping others in our communities, you know, blood, sweat, and tears. And so we've got to watch those people as well, let them know that they're valued as well. Very challenging, very complex issues that we're dealing with in contemporary law enforcement. I come with as a person that's tested, a person with experience in leading successfully law enforcement agencies during these very challenging and and very complex times. And I'm eager to see how if my skill set is what the city of Akron is looking for in his next police chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Hawkins, and congratulations on that new grandchild. Next, I'd like to introduce Stephen L. Mylett. Stephen Mylett began his law enforcement career thirty-two years ago in Corpus Christi, Texas, after serving in the United States Air Force. He rose through the the ranks in Corpus Christi Police Department, serving as Lieutenant, Captain, Police Commander of the Office of Accountability and Assistant Chief of Police. He served as Chief of Police of the South Lake, Texas Police Department for three years. Chief Mylett holds a Master of Science in Criminal Justice Leadership and Management from Sam Houston State University, and he currently serves as Chief of Police of the Bellevue, Washington Police Department. Chief Mylett?
Thank you, Ellen. Good afternoon, Mayor Horgan, and members of the Akron City Council, the citizens of Akron, and the men and women of the Akron Police Department. I too am honored and humbled to be in this part of the process as you seek your next Chief of Police. The introduction that was just shared with you kind of highlighted the three organizations and communities, communities I served in. But what it didn't include was the fact that during my thirty-two years in in the police profession, I had the great fortune to serve in communities and in very, very diverse communities. Diversity based on race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, political views, socioeconomic conditions, and diversity of thought. I've been in the police executive positions for close to fifteen years, nine of which have been in serving as a Chief of Police. But folks, I've never forgotten where I came from, where my roots are. As a patrol officer, where most of this citizen officer interaction occurs and the great responsibility and privilege that officers have as we interact with the public. I have a proven track record of changing systems and need of change, building bridges into all communities, especially communities of color, and increasing diversity in the agencies in which I've led. I haven't done it by myself. Obviously, nobody can do it by themselves. I build coalitions, I build teams. We create together a shared vision that we carry out as one collaborative team. My track record also includes creating culture within the police department that embraces community engagement and where community, the community policing philosophy permeates throughout the entire organization, all of which to arrive at the destination of the mission, which is to reduce crime, reduce the fear of crime, and enhance the quality of life for everybody who calls the city home. If selected to serve as your next Chief of Police, I will leave with integrity, morality, and a strong ethical compass. And I will work very, very hard to earn your trust and your confidence. Folks, we're facing, as both the chief and the deputy chief just pointed out, we're facing some really serious issues. Akron's not immune from that. The violence that are that is occurring and the loss of life is significant and unacceptable. I have a proven track record to reduce crime, especially violent crime. So I'm looking forward to this conversation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Mylett. And at this time, I'd like to introduce our final candidate, Joseph P. Sullivan. Joseph Sullivan served as a member of the Philadelphia Police Department since nineteen eighty-two, where he started as a patrol officer. He held a variety of roles such as Lieutenant on the SWAT team, a commanding officer in the Narcotics Division, and Chief Inspector in the Counterterrorism Bureau. He holds degrees from Saint Joseph's University in Pennsylvania State and has taught at several institutions. In two thousand seventeen, he was promoted to Deputy Commissioner for Patrol Operations, where he oversaw several units, including Neighborhood Services and Community Relations. Chief Sullivan?
You're muted.
You are muted.
Well, good afternoon. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of council. Thank you for the the community of Akron, and thank you for the members of the Akron Police Department that are watching. I have had a fantastic career in Philadelphia. I've had the opportunity to command in basically every aspect of policing and command thousands of fantastic men and women, both sworn and professional staff. Our civilians are a very important part of any police agency. I've also had the opportunity to interact and build bridges in a city that is as diverse as Philadelphia and in the trust of these various communities. You know, many people have said to me, I don't know why you want to be a police chief at this particular point in time. And I say to them, I can't think of a better time to be a Chief of Police and not have the opportunity to be, to have a seat at the table and be part of the conversation as leasing now reforms and goes to the next level. It requires leadership, and that leadership has to have experience. Experience operating in a city as difficult as Philadelphia, that is urged with with poverty, high crime rates. I looked at the community survey as to what the people of Akron were looking for in their their next police chief. I really thought it was impressive. We want police to use less force, and that's something I have a great deal of experience in. Very proud to say that in the Philadelphia Police Department, they have the lowest use of deadly force of all the top ten cities in America. They want to end racial disparities, which has always been a top priority here in Philadelphia, of being very proactive and in monitoring how police actions. One thing we know is more police means less crime, but more police, if not carefully deployed and very carefully supervised, supervised and monitored, can have bad bad impact on communities of color. I'm very cognizant of that. Community engagement has always been a hallmark of everything I did. No matter what assignment you are in in policing, community engagement has to be first and foremost. You could not be successful at any other aspect of policing without trust and cooperation of the community. And I've also been successful in diversifying my command staffs and as the Chief of Training, taking actions to make adjustments in the hiring process to to diversify the police department in Philadelphia to the point where it is right now. So if I am so fortunate enough to become the Police Chief of Akron, I promise you a twenty-four seven commitment, a hundred and ten percent of of my energy, but most of all, that I will be listening and listening and asking questions and taking action only until only after I've gotten your input. I understand your priorities. I understand Akron. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Sullivan, and thank you again to all of our candidates for your opening remarks. I know we're looking very much forward to hearing more from each of you tonight. At this time, I'd like to introduce the facilitator for our conversation, Kemp Boyd. Kemp, or Pastor Coach Boyd, as he's known around Akron, is the Executive Director of the Nondenominational Faith Organization Love Akron, as well as the pastor of Garden City Church. Kemp is a diligent connector and convener who has forged relationships across our city, including the faith, civic, corporate, and nonprofit communities. He is skilled in public engagement and has experience helping to lead some of our most important community conversations, including serving as the co-chair of the Criminal Justice Subcommittee of the City's Racial Equity and Social Justice Task Force. Kemp's mission is to empower those around him to reach their full potential, including the men at Kenmore Garfield High School, where he serves as the head football coach. Kemp and his wife Stacy Stacy live in Akron with their six children. So Kemp will be asking our four candidates questions during tonight's conversation based on those questions submitted by Akron citizens like you who are at home watching tonight. On behalf of Mayor Horgan, we are truly honored to have you with us, Kemp. And thank you for facilitating this conversation. So thank you and welcome.
Welcome. Glad to be with everybody on this evening. Welcome to all of our audience out there in the virtual world and also to our mayor and also to our city council. Good evening, gentlemen, and we're gonna, you know, we're gonna go ahead and rip the Band-Aid off as soon as possible with this first question. Each of you are candidates from outside of the organization, meaning that there is an already in existing infrastructure that has been established. What is the greatest challenges and opportunities for making transformational change as an outsider? And I'm gonna start with you first, Chief 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 Hawkins. You're muted.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for the question. One of the biggest challenges coming in from the outside is that is that the chief is an outsider, and there's a there's a lot of entrenched ideas. There's a there's ways that of doing things. There are traditions that are in place. And and it's important when you come from the outside to first of all, get an appreciation for those traditions and for those things that that are important to the people in the organization. And so it's it's a challenge coming in to if 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 a chief has this idea that he or she is going to come in and make some immediate changes and 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 totally turn things around within a short period of time, he or she will realize very quickly that that's something that is is not very easily done. And so but but one of the great opportunities of this is that in most of our law enforcement agencies, we really do have good conscientious people when they see a person who comes in and a person that is coming in a respectful way, a person that that comes in valued and shows right away that he or she values the people in the organization, values that organization, the traditions of that organization. They're open to new ideas. They know that if an outsider comes in that there will be change. They already know that. But they're they're looking at how this outside person is going to go about that change. And so I think it's one of the great opportunities is that they're really, the the sky really is the limit for a person coming in from the outside. If if the if the chief that's coming in can really connect with the people who are there and share a vision for the organization that's shared, that that's that takes input from those in the organization, those from the community, and it has in it has and have have the people that are within that organization be a part of that, then there can be some special change that can happen in the organization.
Awesome. Deputy Chief Davis, same question.
Yeah, thank you, sir. And I've had the opportunity just in the last several years to be in the chief's office here in Portland when we had a new chief come from outside. And so I have been on the inside of the organization when this change has come, and that's really given me a lot of insight into the challenges. And she and I worked very closely together in the role that I have, and I learned a lot about that. What I have observed is that usually when a chief comes from outside, and especially in these times in all of our communities, there is this tension between the the change and evolution imperative that exists in our communities and that that I I wouldn't even say desire, but that need to see change in our organizations. But also, the change is hard on an organization because people fear loss. And so I think for me, the most important challenge to take on right away, to start to mitigate that and to start to lead the organization forward, is to establish relationships and earn people's trust. And that doesn't mean that we aren't going to call balls and strikes as a chief. But it does mean that we're going that I need to respect the organization that I find and the culture that I find and do everything that I can to understand what that culture really is and not come in with a lot of assumptions about it. And then also try to understand how that organizational culture got to where it is, because there is usually a reason why things are in the organization, even if we need to change them. But I would also say something that it's important for an outside chief never to overlook is the relationship that needs to be built in the community, because you are an all you are also coming from outside that community. And so if I become your chief, I'm gonna have a lot of work to do in that first six months to a year to go out inside and outside the organization, make those connections, spend that time together, and develop those relationships that will be the foundation of the changes that we need to make in the organization.
Awesome. Deputy Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes. First of all, it's a matter of respect as an outsider, you're coming into a new police department. You have to you have to demonstrate that you respect that. And in Akron, you you have a very good police department. If it's time to make it a great police department, and that would be my my goal. But I would communicate that to the executive staff, you know, understanding that I'm sure more than a few of of those men and women were hoping that they might be the next Chief of the Akron Police Department. Well, I understand there's going to be some resistance and resentment. But I had the great, the fantastic experience of working with Chief Charles Charles Ramsey, and he came to Philadelphia from the outside, and we weren't happy about it. But he just in he engaged with us. He sought our input. He gave us his input. He made us see things through a completely different lens, look at issues differently, show us a better way of doing things. But he did it in a very powerful, a very measured measured and respectful way. And that for the new chief is having roundtable discussions, not just with the executive staff, but every level of the organization. That includes the professionals, if you're civilian employees, getting their input, finding out what are their priorities? What do they identify as the problems within the organization, and what would they suggest would be the solution to those problems? And of course, doing the same thing with the community. The first six months is going to be nothing but meetings and listening, asking a lot of questions, looking at other people's point of view. But the the other side of it is, when you come in from the outside, you have a clean slate. You you have no favorites. You have no preconceived notions for coming in and taking a fresh look at something. And in a lot of ways, there's not that mind my mind, there's a lot of people within the department and within the community and really see the value of having someone come in and bring a fresh perspective and a and a fresh set of eyes and ideas to a to the Akron Police Department.
Thank you very much. And Chief Mylett? You're muted. You're muted.
I even said it to myself, unmute. Coach, thanks for the question. I appreciate it. And, you know, one of the disadvantages going last is that a lot of great things are said. So I really would echo what my colleagues have shared. The only things that I think I would add to it is that I've done it twice in South Lake and in Bellevue. And my approach that I've used, it really it echoes with my three colleagues shared. Very first thing I did when I came into the organization, I came into it with a level of humility, because I don't know the organization and I don't know the community. I did as much research as I possibly could in advance of arriving. But from experience, you're not gonna know until you actually arrive and you get in the office. And so what I did in the in in the formula I've used twice successfully is I interviewed every employee in the organization, sworn and civilian. I asked them eight scripted questions to get a kind of an idea of what was going on inside the police department. And then from there, I also interviewed every council member, the leadership team members, and then key community stakeholder groups. It took me a little while to do it, but I I got it done. And what it produced for me anyway was a theme rose really quick. And from there, I was able to start framing what I thought the vision would be, working with my boss and and then all the stakeholder groups, we create, we created a shared vision. Part of that vision is for us in both agencies was this expectation that once you make a certain rank, it's almost like you you're in the club. And so I have always kind of rejected that hierarchy in the paramilitary organization, and this is one example of the changes that we made. The chief needs to be working harder than anybody else in the organization. Why? Because the employees on the line have the closest proximity to you, the public. And so we need, I need to be making sure that you have the knowledge, skills, and abilities to do your job, the equipment, and the support to do your job. And, you know, again, two minutes is 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 a little condensed for for to go through the entire process that I've taken twice. But I made a commitment that I wasn't gonna make any changes for the first six months unless it was critical, because I listened and I asked questions, as Joe had referred to as well.
Thank you all of our finalists for your answers. Our next question is gonna keep up with the theme of, if you will, an outsider. And this question comes from one of our citizens here in Akron named Denise. Is it important to you to live in the city where you will have oversight of this police department? And if higher, do you plan on living in the city of Akron? I'm gonna start with you, Chief Mylett.
Yes, the answer is yes, absolutely. In Corpus Christi, I lived in the city of Corpus Christi. My children were born in Corpus. And, you know, I was very, very connected with the Corpus community. I moved to South Lake, and South Lake is a very affluent community, and it was really difficult to find housing there. While in most of my employees as well, was always connected and I felt connected with with, you know, the South Lake community, wonderful community. But I've always felt that you should live in the community in which you serve. I found the same challenge here in Bellevue, where the cost of living is very, very high. In the six years that I've been here, I've lived in the city maybe about two years. And again, the short answer is yes. If I am selected to be Chief of Police, I will live in the city of Akron. My hope is that I'm gonna attract my children and my grandchildren to the city of Akron. And this is where Joanne and I will plant roots and because I think that Akron community is a phenomenal community. And the city of Akron, the actual government itself is is just, I think it's second to none, because the work that they're doing, leaning in to some very difficult conversations and leading in this area for me is a demonstration of how professional it is and a community that, again, I I really want to be part of. So, Coach, the question, the answer to the question is yes. I will live in the city of Akron, and I think it is very important that the chief live in the city of Akron.
Thank you. Deputy Commissioner Sullivan?
The answer is unequivocal, yes. I I have always lived in the city of Philadelphia. Being a police chief is a twenty-four seven job, and when something goes wrong, when there's a problem, you need to be on scene within minutes, and living in the city affords you that opportunity. It also sends a very important message. I was honored enough to be the the Police Chief for the city of Akron. I could not imagine sending a message of not living in the city of Akron. Thirdly, from a personal standpoint, there's a whole ton of reasons to want to live in the city of Akron. At a beautiful city, you've got a growing city, it's going places. I I just would not have ever considered anything else. And it certainly is being a police chief, as I said before, is twenty-four seven commitment. And the mayor, city council, and most of all, the citizens of Akron have a right to expect that when something is wrong, that you're not coming in an hour out. So I most certainly look forward to planting roots in Akron and and making Akron my home.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Davis?
Well, of course, it would be my commitment to live in the city of Akron, and I think for me, it's a matter of commitment. If I'm your police chief, I need to demonstrate to you that I'm committed to the city, that the organization serves, committed to the organization. And I can't think of a more meaningful way of showing that commitment than sending my kids to school with your kids, maybe living in your neighborhood, and and being part of the community where I'm where I am chief. I have always believed that a Chief of Police should live in the city where they serve. I am a little reluctant to impose that requirement on everyone in the organization, and I'll tell you why. And it's based on my own experience here in Portland, which is another one of those cities that's very expensive to live in. But it's also, you know, we have some, I can think of one of my best command officers who whose passion outside of work is horses. And you can't afford horse property in Portland. That would be prohibitively expensive for what a commander makes. So I, that's where I will always have that little bit of reluctance on requiring that of everyone in the organization. But for the police chief, it's it's a it's an absolute that the chief, you know, the role that they have should should live in the city and demonstrate that solid commitment to to the city, to the organization that serves it and to all of the communities that make up the city. And the last thing I'll say on this is there's a practical matter as well, because my style is to be out in the community a lot. And if I'm living in the community, then I'm a lot closer to that to where I'm gonna be most of the time anyway.
Thank you for that. And Chief Hawkins?
You know, without a doubt, the same answer that we've gotten from the other three candidates. You know, I I started out in police work in the early nineteen nineties, and as soon as I was hired in the police department in Southfield, Michigan, I moved to that city as an officer. And this was during a time when officers did not want to live in in the city in which they were policing. You know, there's safety concerns, they're worried about privacy issues and and things like that. And it was just always important to me as an officer to to be in the city. When I was later promoted to chief, I remained in in that city. I think it's important for the chief to be there. And when I was hired as the chief in Albany, I immediately moved to Albany. It's it's critically important that that happens. It's the, like some of the other candidates have mentioned, it's the symbolism of it. It's the messaging that that we send. And and absolutely, if if I'm the chief in Akron, I'll absolutely move to the city of of Akron.
Thank you for that answer. Next question. There has been a lot of conversation happening in Akron around police oversight. Mayor Horgan has appointed a Racial Equity and Social Justice Task Force to make recommendations by the end of the year. Whoever's the next chief will be operating under a new and hopefully improved civilian oversight model base on those recommendations. What are your experiences with or your opinions about civilian oversight boards and other forms of citizen oversight of police? And I'm gonna start with Deputy Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes, thank you. In Philadelphia, I worked very closely with the Police Advisory Commission, the director was Mr. Hunt Manu. It's had an outstanding relationship. I really valued the input. I I valued I I valued criticism. I valued the suggestions on how to make things better. The director sat on firearms review board, had input in our evaluation of all police destroyed firearms, which brought a really important perspective to the board, you know, and those of us who have been in law enforcement for a long time, we can get kind of hold into into our view of things. And more importantly, he brought a sentinel review aspect to that process. And what I mean by that is there is no such thing as a good police shooting. That that doesn't exist. And it's violence, and then when it occurs in a community, And it's violence and then when it occurs in a community, it, 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 it may be unfortunately, uh, uh, necessary and may, may be lawful, but. It is still traumatized that community and the children inside that community. We even, when, when we uh, un-conducted the investigation and, and dealt with the legal issues and. Internal uh, bio- policy issues. We need to look at every critical incident like a police shooting and every critical incident has a negative impact on the community. And say, go back from the very beginning. Was there a step that we could have interfe- intervened? Was there a different approach that we could have taken? When some opportunity ha- had missed, that would have prevented us from being at the, at this moment. Um, these are the type of concepts that, you know, y- you, you receive when you have that type of, of, of cooperation and a good relationship. Full cooperation. It should be obviously quite, uh, report only to the mayor and be independent of the police department. But that doesn't mean that we don't work cooperatively together, we don't share information. And I look forward to see the, the exact structure that, that is decided upon, but I can, one thing I can, can assure you, whatever that structure is. That director will find himself with a, an excellent partner in, in myself. I am chosen as the next police chief for Akron.
Thank you very much. And I'm gonna go to Chief Hawkins, same question.
Yo. Police, police oversight, civilian uh, police rev- review boards and, and those, those types of boards. You know, whether we like it or not in law enforcement. That's the future, that's, that's where we're going. That's the natural evolution of it and it's frustrating. Uh, for uh, for many of us who have been in law enforcement for, for so long. And have not had that type of. Uh, partnerships and oversight or whatever we wanna call it with these types of boards is frustrating because we've done it our way for so long, but. With this reform movement and this reimagining movement that we're seeing. You know, not just in Albany and not just in Akron and not just in other place, but across this country. Um, it's, it's inevitable that, that law enforcement leaders are going to have to. Embrace this concept of some sort of oversight. Uh, with our agencies and in most cases, it'd, it'd be some sort of civilian oversight. It, it's just the reality. And now the question is, is what, would this new, this iteration of change with, in terms of this oversight look like? You know, how will this impact, you know, our agencies? You know, as we gotta remember. Um, in New York and in Michigan and Ohio, we have very strong police union. With a very solid collective bargaining agreements. That govern things like wages, benefits and discipline and how this discipline is administered and the process for discipline. And so we've got to make sure that, that as we move towards this natural evolution that if we don't close out. You know, our, our union representatives, the other officers who are going to be impacted by this discipline. Now, the, the answer to, to the question, my answer is, uh, I, I, I think fundamentally, I, I'm, I'm on board with having. Uh, an independent uh, organization that analyzes and assesses police activity. I, I think it's, it's a good thing to have another set of eyes. To, to have somebody, to have some other entity that can look at these things and at the very least, give the uh, police chief. Um, some, some advice in a perspective. On some of the things that we're dealing with as it pertains to discipline and other matters within our police departments.
Thank you very much, Chief Hawkins. We'll go over next to Chief Milet.
Coach, when I joined in nineteen eighty-nine, my brothers before me, my father before, before them. For many years, the only uh, departments that had civilian oversight were those that. Um, had issues of corruption. Um, or a proven track record to where the, the department had failed in their, in their responsibility to hold their employees accountable. Um, oversight was usually synonymous with a consent decree. Uh, why? Because back then, in most communities, what came out of an officer's mouth and the, the police department itself. Um, had great trust in the community and, and we were always given the benefit of the doubt. Unfortunately, somewhere along the way, that's changed. And it's not enough that, you know, we say one thing, uh, people want proof. And people want to know that there is somebody, an independent of us. That is looking at what we're doing and sharing information transparently. Uh, in, with a level of transparency. Um, they want evidence and they wanna know the truth. So more and more cities are adopting uh, civilian oversight boards. Now. In its basic form, police departments have always been answerable to oversight through. Uh, the community directly and then the elected officials, you know, city councils, mayors. Um, but. What we're seeing now is becoming more and more normal for police departments to have. Some level of civilian oversight. Now, there's different models. And I think the departments that demonstrate uh, that they're, they're engaging corruption. Or they have a track record of failing in their duties and responsibilities. That oversight should be pretty solid, you know, stringent and, 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 and tight. But for others, where that doesn't exist, there's different models. So it all depends on the city, it all depends on the model. In Bellevue, we're exploring that, we're looking at it very closely. Uh, we're working with civil rights groups and others. Um, and the unions, unions gotta be involved in it and they have to understand what the benefit to them is. You know, so when we're telling the story of a use of force, having an independent group come over and say, yep, that's exactly what happened. The car, it, it benefits the officer. Um, if I'm selected chief of police in Akron, I'm gonna work closely with Mr. Young. I'm glad that the uh, Akron City Council changed the policies, has given him more access. And more collaborative approach with uh, the police auditor.
Thank you, chief. And also Deputy Chief Davis.
Yeah, thank you. And it, and community oversight of policing is something I actually have a lot of experience with because here in Portland, we have been on the cutting edge. Uh, nationally of community police oversight for a very long time. And there are two places where I believe the community oversight adds value to the police department. One is the more traditional concept of independent oversight of the complaint and discipline processes. And we have a very longstanding rel- relationship with our own independent police review, having worked in internal affairs. And having on the, on the ground, so to speak, worked day in and day out with them, I have seen where that type. Of oversight actually adds to people's trust in the process, not only in the community, but also inside the organization. And I, I have good news for the police profession about independent oversight, that it is actually a good thing. As long as it is implemented thoughtfully, which I, I see happening in Akron. But the other place that we don't talk about as much, that I think there is a lot of room for independent oversight to add value. Is in more of the operations of the police department and we're limited for time, so I'll give you an example. Uh, I was recently tasked with coming up with a gun violence reduction plan here in the city of Portland and. We needed to make sure we did not create a lot of collateral damage. In the community in terms of trust while still addressing a pretty serious gun violence problem. And so the model that I developed and which we are in the process of implementing now is one where we actually have. Community oversight of that effort. Where there is, we call it a community oversight group for the patrol function of gun violence interdiction and reduction. And the, we're in the process of developing this, the goal will be. For that group and the officers that we select for this unit to collaborate on that problem. Come up with police strategies that are acceptable to the community. And then go out and implement those strategies and this oversight group will monitor to make sure we don't have disparities. And that we're actually making an impact on the problem that we're trying to solve. So it's, it's not. It doesn't only add value in terms of your complaint and discipline process, although it certainly does there as well.
Thank you, everyone. This next question is gonna come from one of our citizens here in Akron. Um, the citizen's name is Rob. Rob is asking this question and I wanna start with you, Chief um, Milet. Um, because you've mentioned in your opening about the importance of community policing. His question is this. What would you do to change the relationships between the Akron Police Department and many segments of the community? From that, from one that is adversarial and lacks trust. To one that is cooperative partnership based on mutual trust. And I'm gonna go ahead and name uh, uh, at least a few of those segments, okay? So the one segment I don't wanna mention is the youth. I think that's very important. The next segment in our community are African Americans. The next segment in our community, I believe, is, is our faith community as a whole. So how do we, how do we help to repair the relationship between the Akron Police Department and those segments within our community? That is not one of adversarial and lacks trust, but one that is cooperative partnership based on a mutual trust. And I'm gonna start with you, Chief Ma- Milet.
That's a great question, Coach. Thank you and thank you for the uh, citizen who, who shared that question. It's gonna be part of the entry into the Akron in, in listening, is trying to find out exactly what's contributing. To those tensions between those specific communities and the police. Um, you know, in, in Bellevue. You know, and I'm not saying Bellevue is Akron, cause it's not, they're two totally different cities where there, there's some, some similarities, but what we did in Bellevue. Is uh, we reached out to the communities, specifically communities of color. And asked them what we were doing that was failing them. And based on the responses that we got, cause my officers want to serve. And I'm pretty convinced that based on the research that I've done, that the Akron officers also want to serve and serve effectively. Um, breaking down the barriers of communication. Um, one of the things that we implemented in, in Bellevue was uh, I, I commissioned seven advisory councils to the chief of police. Based on race, ethnicity, sexual orientation and religion. So I have an African American advisory council. We uh, met and have been meeting quite a bit uh, over the last six years. Uh, together, we've identified those issues that. Um, uh, create mistrust in the African American community itself. And then we worked on that as a police department. I shared the information with my employees and collectively we came up with um, uh, efforts and, and initiatives. To get out there and start building that trust. And again, I, I, in this, this question is a very, very important question. And it requires really more than two minutes of a response because then you have the whole issue of youth. The youth are on the move, folks, and you all know that. And they are challenging police departments across the, across the nation because they're not satisfied with our performance. And so, again, interacting with youth, listening to them and trying to connect with them where they are. And finding ways to, to serve that population. And Coach, the faith-based groups, um, they're essential. They've gotta be present. And they, that is one of the most foundational relationships that a police department must have in the community. Because most people are going to church. And you know, you, you build those relationships and I know I'm over my two minutes, so. Um, I wish I could spend more time on this, cause that question by itself is, is very important one.
Appreciate that. Thanks for staying to the top as much as you can. I know these are really um, deep and. Really um, ever growing and unfolding questions. Um, Deputy Chief Davis, I'm gonna come to you now with the question, cause in your opening statement, you talked about we are at a crossroads and I believe this question. Represents those crossroads that we're in. So tell us, how would you go about really? Dip diving into the different segments of our community to help to rebuild that, that trust?
Oh, yes, sir. And, and this question really describes, I think, probably the highest priority of your next police chief. And I, I think there are several concrete steps that we need to take. To start to rebuild that trust. And I think one of the first steps. Is to acknowledge where harm has been done in the past, in history. And that, you, you know, I'm, I'm always surprised how reluctant a lot of us in the policing profession are to just. Sit down with people and say, you know what? I'm sorry that my profession had that impact on you. And I wanna make it right. And I think it starts with that acknowledgement. I am a big believer in truth and reconciliation processes. Um, that is a very large project and you have to take that on with a lot of thought and a lot of community involvement, but I think that's another. Another thing that I would at least like to explore. That's something that you really need to be in the community for a while and see how ready it is. On, in the community and in the department for a process like that that has been done elsewhere. Uh, but the places where it has been done, like I, like in Stockton, California, for example. That process does, makes a huge difference in terms of community trust because it starts by just acknowledging the past. Uh, community ask, involvement in all aspects of the department and, and I believe in giving the community opportunities to invest in us. As well as us investing in the community and, in community policing and outreach efforts. But why not have community members or, for, for example, I have pastors that come in and teach. Advanced academy classes, just as we socialize new officers into the Portland Police Bureau. So that we're not just socializing them into the police bureau, we're socializing them into the community of Portland. Uh, youth outreach, I think you have some tremendous opportunities there in terms of your, the proposal for a path to law enforcement. I would probably rename it to path to policing. Um, but that's a huge opportunity there to engage youth and have them be able to see themselves as members of your organization someday. Makes a tremendous difference and I have some experience I can talk about a little later with that. Um, but again, that's a, a high level summary in two minutes of something that I could go on and on about, but thank you for the question. I think that's, that's one of the main priorities.
Thank you so much. And Chief Hawkins, I'm gonna come to you next.
Without a doubt, that, that is, um, like Chris said, one of the, um, probably the main priority in, in, in our country right, right now in policing. You know, I got into policing in, in nineteen ninety and it was uh, shortly thereafter, we had the Rodney King incident in Los Angeles. And um, and now as a police chief, thirty years later. Um, you know, I'm experiencing the, the aftermath of the George Floyd incident in Minneapolis. And one of the things that has been a, a frustration for me over my thirty years in, in this profession. Is that the same types of outrage and, and pain and, and hurt. That was expressed by members particularly of, of the African American community back in the early nineteen nineties. It's the same outrage and pain and, and hurt that, that's being expressed now thirty years later after George Floyd, so. It, it tells you that, you know, the, the, the crux of this question is, is about those relationships. Why do we still have these gaps? In terms of um, relations between police and members of my, our minority communities, between police and members of our youth. Between police and members of our faith-based community. And, and so, we've, we've got to, it, it, at the, at the very least, um, as it was mentioned before, we've got to understand that it is a problem. That we do a lot of things well in law enforcement. We have the most conscientious. And hardworking people that are police officers that you will see in any industry in this country. You know, young men and women who will, who would do things to, to, to save a, a, a piece of property. That's been stolen from somebody and they'll jump a fence and, and go out of there and be disabled. You know, so, so these are some great people, but there are some things that we can do better. And one of the things that we can do better is with our relationships with our youth and our African American community. And so, one of the things that. You, we have to do when you talk about changing relationships, we have to see what those relationships are. Now fortunately, in the city of Albany, uh, the relationships are, are great, that the, the ethic in terms of needing to, knowing that we need to do this. It was there. And so I simply had to support all those things that were going well and then add to those with some things like a, like a police cadet program. Uh, with a pastors on patrol program, uh, with meeting with the African American clergy on a regular basis. And so, in, in incorporating those things into what is already being done in great organizations, that's what has to be done in, in the city of Akron. You know, uh, there's some great things being done in this, in this police department and in this community. What can the new chief do to, to preserve those things that are being done great in these areas that we just discussed and then add to them? Value to what's already there.
Thank you so much, Chief Hawkins. And Deputy Ch- Deputy Commissioner Sullivan.
Thank you, Coach, and, and I'm, I'm gonna go back and, and paraphrase Charles Ramsey as I start out. You know, he made a statement that, you know, can't keep saying it's a few bad apples. At some point, you gotta turn around and say it's time to. Cut it down and build a new tree. And I think that's what we're doing right now, or I should say, plant a new tree. There's a lot of things we have to start over. We have to reduce violence while at the same time restoring confidence. Um, it, it, the public's confidence in the police. Well, and so I like to start from the basic and move forward to begin with the way that we train. And one of the things that I was fortunate enough to do, I took the first, a group of selfie police cadets down to the Holocaust museum in Washington DC. So they could understand. The role that the police had in the Holocaust. And, and I don't mind admitting that I, I really not have that knowledge myself. It, it, it was a life-changing experience for all of us. And we now do the same thing with the African American museum here in Philadelphia. Um, in Chicago, they recruit out to different communities that they're gonna police. In Chicago, they recruit out to different communities that they're gonna police and have returning citizens and members of the community talk about their particular communities, their cultures, their practices. So there's a, there's a level of understanding there. And then it's the matter in which we police. It's that everyday interaction that most people have with the police that matters the most. We can run all of the great community policing programs in the world, and we should and we shall. But they will mean nothing if officers, I mean, if citizens, and especially citizens of color, not treated with respect, are not treated in a dignified manner when they come through the window for, for police service, when the police come to their house, let alone in, 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 in more, in, in more severe situations. The other side, you, you talk, Coach, specifically about youth, and that's something I have a lot of experience in. As, as the president of a children's charity and some of the programs that we promote, the Police Youth Alliance Program, creating interaction between local youth and, and their local police officers. Kills and Drills Program that we support that started over the killing of a fifteen-year-old that was playing basketball in a, in the basketball court, it sprayed with gunfire. But one of the things that we do know is that there are too many youth that are involved in these crimes. And there are way too many youth that are the victims of these crimes. One of the strategies that we know works, empirically we know it works, it's evidence-based, is that it jobs. When you give a young man or a young woman a job, you give them purpose, you give them pride, you give them the ability to provide for their basic needs. And I don't think many people really understand the, the level of poverty that exists in cities like Philadelphia. How that contributes to crime and how if you're not addressing those issues, that policing alone is not going to put an end to the violence. It's good policing, it's constitutional policing, working in concert with violent interrupters, with nonprofits, with community leaders, with providing young people with opportunity, providing them with life skills, providing them with positive activities. And this is one of the reasons we saw the rise in, in juvenile crime and juvenile victimizations. And it's, 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 it's here in Philadelphia. It's the way that we engage with the community. It's very important in communities, especially communities of color, feel the day of input into the policies and the practices that impact them, that they have a say in the way that their communities are policed. You have low clearance rates, you have low trust, and you're not gonna fix that clearance rate until you fix that trust.
Thank you very much. And we're getting to the point where, you know, time is gonna be wrapping up. So I'm gonna just, you know, be intentional about asking questions to two of you guys and giving two of you different questions, okay? So just, just be prepared for that. Currently in the state of Ohio, barbers and cosmetologists are required to complete more hours of training prior to license, licensing than law enforcement officers. Do you believe police academies should be required to provide more training for police officers? And how will you ensure that Akron Police Department is proactive in addressing training deficiencies as opposed to reactive? And I'm gonna pose this question first to Deputy Chief Davis.
Well, thank you. And, and in a word, yes. I, I, you know, the state in terms of its training requirements to certified police officers sets the floor. But we can always exceed that. And this is one of the places where I will, I will just let you know in advance, full disclosure, that if I become your police chief, I, I am going to be seeking to make big investments in officer training. And not just training, because we, we, we focus on training. Training and education are two different things. There is training that is necessary to, for somebody to be a police officer, but training teaches someone to perform a task. What I believe very firmly we need more of in, in our socialization of police officers and in their ongoing training is education, which is a broader thing. And it equips people with a set of tools that they can apply to a wide variety of situations. Now, I believe that, that one of the mistakes that we've made as a profession over a very long time has been that we focus on training and that training tends to focus on tactics or manipulation of a piece of equipment. Well, then we have an issue like racial inequities and stops or, or applying an equity lens to policing. And we try to roll that out with training as if we are teaching somebody to do a task. It's, it's a broader concept of education that, that I think we need to look at that, that as. But I will tell you that, you know, here in our organization, we add almost as much of advanced academy training to a new recruits training as they go through in the state's basic academy. We don't run our own police academies in Oregon. And we make big investments in ongoing in-service training and education on these big issues. And it pays off in terms of better outcomes out in the community.
Chief Hawkins, same question.
Absolutely. And, you know, in, in Albany, we go vastly above what's minimally required for our police officers. We run our own in-house academy. And so, so it's not just the amount of training that these recruits get, but it's the type of training. And that type of training must be dependent on the community. What, what is the community like? What are the expectations of each community? Every community is different in terms of the expectations. And so it's important for, for communities and for police departments to understand what the communities want in their police officers. And that's one thing that Albany has done very, very well, great. And this was done before I got there. And, and that's a model that I think should be replicated in cities across the country. And, you know, obviously it's, there's some cost constraints associated with that because in order to go well above what's minimally required, you know, you have to have more staffing and more resources in order to, to do so. But if that is, if, if those aren't barriers, then, then absolutely. And, and another thing that goes along with training also is, we just can't put people into training, give them more training, better training, and expect that we're going to have better police officers. It's about the type of people that we're putting in there. Who are we recruiting? How are we recruiting? And, you know, what, what types, you know, and it goes beyond, you know, years and years ago, you had to have a military background or you had to have people who were your relatives who were police officers in order to get in. But now we, we really need to diversify the people that we're putting in our academies. People who have diverse experiences, different socioeconomic backgrounds, different educational backgrounds, life experiences. You know, put a diverse group of people into our academies. More training, give them training with more substance that is tailored to the community of which they're serving. And I think that we're on the way to having a better product, producing a better product in terms of the, the officers that are serving these unique communities that we have across America.
Thank you. A new question for Deputy Commissioner Sullivan and also Chief Mallett. The question is this, do you support the National George Floyd Justice in Policing Act? Why or why not? And I'm gonna start with you Deputy Commissioner Sullivan. You muted, you muted, you muted Deputy. Still muted?
My apologies. I do, because it dovetails perfectly with the conversation that we just had. One of the things that it does, it sets a baseline for training of police officers in America. And that's one of the things we desperately need. Standardization. We have seventeen thousand plus police departments in America, over nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers. And they're all being trained and, and supervised at a, at a varying level, varying standards. And it's certainly a major problem within our profession. And, and as well as the other parts of, of the bill in, in terms of banning chokeholds, limiting no-not warrants, limiting liability. And the, the, these are all positive things. These are things that we, we should support, that I will continue to support. But along with that, we, we, we see the opportunity here now to, to, to it, take our curriculums and change them based on the funding that will come with that type of money, especially for smaller police departments. But everything within that act that I have seen and that I have read, I think supports perfectly with the department that, that wants to reform itself, that wants a guideline. But to me, that's a baseline for, for, for the Akron Police Department. Like I think the Akron Police Department is, is probably in, in, pretty much in compliance with most of that act. Now it's for people like myself, work with the community and to work with my executive staff and then, and personnel at all levels in the department, to then take that and then improve upon that. And, and, and police in Akron to a higher standard in terms of our training, in terms of our policies, making sure that they're national best practices, making sure that our training reflects that life, sanctity, human life is a priority, meaning that we spend as much time learning de-escalation as we do firing our weapons on the range. Both are important, but they have to be seen as equally important. Our job is to save lives.
Thank you Deputy Commissioner. And Chief Mallett.
Thank you, Coach. I, I've reviewed the bill, the act, and there's a lot of things, a lot of moving parts in it. The vast majority of the content that's in the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act, I also agree with. Having a national registry, standardizing training is very, very important. And just if I can weigh in just on that last conversation, I agree with my colleagues on training. But you know what? Derek Chauvin, he wasn't trained to do what he did in Minneapolis. So to Chief Hawkins' point, it's who you're hiring and it's also the accountability piece that is the responsibility of the police department, that if anything surfaces, you need to deal with it quickly to eliminate, you know, behavior like that. Getting back on to this, the only, you know, folks, I am always open and honest. And that's if I'm selected as your chief of police, you will never have to doubt anything that I say, because what I say is what I mean. The only thing that gives me pause is when we start talking about eliminating qualified immunity. We expect and we ask these men and women to go out and serve the public in some really, really dangerous situations. And if an officer is acting with malice in their heart or with hatred or bias or racism, then yeah, then, then they should be punished both criminally and civilly. But when we start talking about an officer that is doing the right thing for the right reasons and we start opening up this door for people to go after them civilly, that will have a chilling effect on policing and people's willingness to join our profession. We're already starting to see that. State of Washington was considering eliminating qualified immunity. I'm glad that they didn't. There are already in Washington, there's already provisions that if an officer acts with malice or with hatred, then yes, they subject themselves to, to the civil process. But the vast majority of things that are in the Policing Act, I agree with and I support.
Thank you so much. I wanna come back to you, Chief Hawkins, because you just brought this up. So my question to you is this, what is your strategy for recruiting minorities and the hiring process?
You know, when I got into law enforcement thirty years ago as a young black man, I, I had some hesitancy. You know, I, I heard the stories that, you know, my parents had given me the story that a lot of young black kids get about how to, how to survive encounters with the police. You know, I'd heard, I hadn't had a lot of personal negative interactions, but not a lot of positive either. And I'd heard a lot of negative things about policing. And so right now, we, we've got a two-fold challenge in law enforcement. First of all, our numbers are down overall. You know, years and years ago, we, we, all of us on this panel, we've got stories of how there were thousands of people who put in for police jobs and it's very competitive. And now we only get hundreds putting in for police jobs. So that's the first challenge. But the other challenge is, though, that is, that, that problem is exacerbated with, with, with respect to minorities. Because it's even lower now with minorities. And so we, we've got a problem. And I think, my personal opinion is that this reform and reimagining process that communities across the country, including Akron, are going through right now, is going to change the game in terms of the recruitment, particularly of minorities and to police, in police work. Because what this does, it, it signals to these young African American men and women that things are different. You know, we, you know, Akron produced a formal document about reform in the communities. Albany produced a formal document. Other communities are doing this. And now these young African American men and women see that this is not their parents' police department. Things are different. There, there's some formal, formalization of the culture change in these police departments and they feel now that they can come in and make a difference. There's a, there was a hesitancy before with the old police department. We reach, we reach out and tell these young men and women that, you know, come join us, you can have a pathway to being successful, you can help us engage and all these other things. But they're hearing that, but with their, in, in their hearts, what they're thinking is, no, this is the same old place. So, so my short answer to, to this question is, reforming and trans, in, in, in this, in this whole transforming and, and reimagining that we're going through with policing will send a strong signal to African Americans, but to all young men and women in, in general, that things are different in policing. This isn't, this is an industry now that is willing to change. An industry that has some versatility and flexibility and, and openness to bringing in new ideas.
I, I appreciate that, Chief Hawkins. Chief Mallett, same question.
Thank you. Thank you, Coach, for the question. You know, the first, the question that you asked me earlier about connecting with the community in Akron where this community wants to see themselves in their police officers. And, and focusing on diversity hiring is one of the biggest priorities for chiefs, or it should be anyway. At least it is for me in the city of Bellevue. What I've done in the city of Bellevue is I made increasing diversity a priority. And then I, then I put my money where my mouth was. And I appointed a recruiter whose focus was to increase diversity hiring. I'm proud to say, over the last six years, every year that I've been serving as chief, we have increased diversity in the police department every single year. How did we do it? I explained to my employees all of the vast benefits of having a diverse workforce. And then I also rejected flat out any sort of correlation about adding diversity and this perception that some held that you're gonna be lowering standards. There is, I rejected that flat out and, and explained the reasons why. Working with our three unions, we adjusted our hiring practices and where we found actually some, a systemic racist issue in our hiring practice, we eliminated it and we corrected it, we repaired it. I use and always leverage the seven advisory councils to the chief. They have helped in our recruitment effort. I've recruited and added diversity in my command staff, in my first-line supervisor level. It's important, folks, the people want to see themselves in their police officers and that will also lead to trust. Very, very important. Thank you.
Thank you. This is an important question. So I want our two other candidates also to answer the question as well. This is too important just to present it to two of you. So I'm gonna go next to you Deputy Chief Davis.
I was hoping you were gonna let us answer this question because this is another one of those fundamental issues in our profession right now. I think it start at the high level, the work that we will do in terms of building trust in the community will help with the reluctance, especially in communities of color, to take the test and, and come and be a police officer. But really, to get a little bit more specific, I think we need to be very thoughtful about the message that we send about who we are as police, especially in our recruiting message, but across the board. And, you know, a lot of times we tend in our public messaging, when we talk about the good things that we do in policing, we talk about the things that appeal to us, not realizing that just like our communities are very diverse, police work is actually a very diverse profession. There are all kinds of places, especially in a larger police department like Akron, where you can find your unique spot in that organization. And so that's the message I think we need to, to communicate in our recruiting, is that there's a place for you on our team. And look at all of these different ways that you can serve your community as an Akron police officer. I also, I, I will tell you that one of the first things that I would do as your chief is evaluate the entire recruiting and hiring process and look for those places where we have disproportionate impacts on particular groups. Where we, for example, you know, we found some places in our hiring process when we did this, where we were washing out women and people of color for no reasons connected to their actual suitability to be police officers. And when we modified those processes, we didn't reduce our standards, but we did increase the number of really high-quality people we were able to bring into the organization. And we were able to diversify our hiring classes significantly through some of those efforts. So that's a, that is another one of those just critical issues in the profession right now.
Thank you. And Deputy Commissioner Sullivan. Thank you. And Deputy Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes Coach. When I was a chief of, of training for the Philadelphia Police Department, I was also a, a board member of the Municipal Police Officers Training Commission, um, setting standards in Pennsylvania. And we were not meeting our diversity goals. We weren't even coming close. And one of the things that, that I looked into, when we talked to our background investigators, they almost felt like they were, uh, almost tired guns. They were kind of like, you know, felt that, uh, they were being measured by how many people they eliminated. And, and we had to sit them down and explain to them, your job is not to eliminate people, your job is to get qualified candidates through and not be eliminating people for ridiculous reasons. Another thing we looked at the steps in the hiring process. It was completely backward, backwards. We looked at those steps that were impacting women and impacting applicants of color. One of the things was a written test. We would take a written test and, and when we had it evaluated by academia, they said a lot of the questions in there were, 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 were just not fair questions for, for all applicants. The written test was a predictor of zero. We got rid of the written test. The other one was financials. Listen, one thing we know, it's not a level playing field out there for everyone. So not everyone's going to have the same, that, that, at the income ratio. That's not, doesn't mean someone doesn't pay their bills and they shouldn't be a police officer. You really look at this and you make sure that in those steps that people are failing the most, you, 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 you put those steps up front. So that if they fail once, they can try, they, they can come back a second time or even a third time. By, by doing all these things, by making sure that the requirements to be a police officer are job-related, they're fair to everyone. Making sure that the steps in the process are conducted in, in a, in a fair and proper fashion. But then also it's about, if, if you're really serious about this, where are you doing your recruiting at? You going to black colleges and universities? Are you going to ethnic events? Are you, are you really, really in an aggressive fashion, cast in a wide net? But also always looking at your homegrown talent first. Programs out there thirty by thirty to make sure that thirty percent of all recruit classes by two thousand and thirty are thirty percent female. National Organization of Black Law Enforcement has just become the lead program. That is a program to, to, to prepare minority applicants to be successful in the application process. Community engagement through mentoring and curriculum assistance. But these are just some of the, uh, I would certainly be reaching out to both of those programs to help us, Akron, as well as once again, listening to the community and having them tell me what part of this process you think is number one, unattractive to, to minority candidates. And number two, unfair to minority candidates and start fixing the problem.
I'd like to thank each and every one of you for your very, I think, honest and candid, um, answers to some of these questions. We're coming now to the close of our Q and A portion of our program tonight. We're gonna move into closing statements from each of our finalists. And, um, this is kind of on my heart, it didn't come up through this, but I would love if you all could touch on it, even in your closing statements. Um, COVID nineteen has been kind of, if you will, talked about or labeled as the great revealer. And I think one of the things it has revealed within our society is the importance of mental health and awareness. Um, reducing the stigma, um, of a mental health disorder, but also raising the awareness of one. You all work in law enforcement, um, you, 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 you've been patrol cops yourself. You, you, you handle a large group, a large department of men and women who out each and every day risking their lives. Um, just mention briefly your closing statements. Anything that you're currently doing as a result to mental health training for your departments, for the, 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 the men and the women that you oversee as, as chief, um, of Akron. And so we're in, we're in, we're in our closing statement. So if that can be touched upon, I'd appreciate it. If, if not, I understand, but it's just very important, I think, where we are right now within our society, especially within Akron. Because we really push a lot of the awareness of a mental health, um, disorder within our community. And it'd be great to see sometimes in that engagement that our officer may have with a citizen, understanding that that may be a role in some of that behavior, I think would be beneficial, not only to the officer, but also to the citizen at hand. So, um, I'm, I'm gonna be quiet and I'm just gonna go and call on each and every one of you to give your closing statement. And right now I'm gonna start with, um, Deputy Chief Davis.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll, I'll zoom in on mental health and then zoom out on my conclusion if I, if I can. Um, we do a lot, uh, to, to deal with this issue here in Portland. We have all of our officers attend crisis intervention training. It is not just a specialty in our organization. There's an add-on even above that that is a voluntary training. But it, and I am a big believer in co-responder models, in alternative response models where appropriate to deal with folks in mental health crisis besides police. But no matter what we do, police officers will always find themselves coming into contact with people experiencing mental health crisis. And so it is critical for us to, to make sure that we equip our officers with the tool to do exactly what you said, sir. Which is to realize when what they're really dealing with is a mental health issue. Another big challenge is then having follow-on resources that those officers can refer people to, to deal with the, the actual problem they're having, rather than putting people in the criminal justice system where we know what that tends to do is make mental health problems even worse. Uh, also on that topic though, I think we need to be thoughtful about the mental health of our employees as well. Because it's a difficult job and inside the organization, we need to reduce that traditional stigma about recognizing when you need some help and we need to, to lift people up and encourage them and provide them ways of getting help, sometimes for their own issues that you, you develop in the course of a, a career in the police service. I'll close by saying this, I believe that the essence of leadership really is vision. And I believe that this is a time in our profession, I believe it's a time in Akron, I believe it's a time in, in every police department in our country where that's what we need. We need to come together with our communities and our police departments. They are not two separate things. Your police department is part of your community and we need to come together as a community, develop that shared vision for what public safety service looks like in the future. Take stock of where we are now and where we've got gaps where we need to work. And then we need to embark together upon that journey in a way that brings everyone along. Police reform, as I like to say, is not something that we will do successfully to police departments and police officers. It is something that we will do with them. And so I humbly ask you, uh, now in your community for the opportunity to come and join you in this work. And thank you very much for this, for this opportunity.
And Chief Myla.
Thank you Coach. Um, I'll also tackle the mental health question as well. Um, this, this part of our community, these human beings, um, that we as a police department provide services to and we as a community should wrap our arms around, need special care and a special approach. Um, I also believe in the co-responder approach. Um, we as a police department, as a police profession, have inherited a lot of things over, over periods of time. And that's where reimagining policing, um, needs to, we really need to dig deep on those, those things that we've inherited. That really, it, we're not the best equipped and best prepared and the best group to respond to the, the individual's need. And this is one of those issues, um, people dealing with, uh, mental health issues and crisis and, uh, and homelessness. Um, in the city of Bellevue, we are, we have launched a co-responder program. We've identified officers, um, put them in plain clothes, get, have given them additional training. All of our officers in the city of Bellevue are CIT trained. Uh, they have all received training on de-escalation. It's not just a one-shot deal. This is training that is continual training. Um, and our officers are, it's called a crisis community, uh, community crisis action teams. And it partners a police officer with the mental health professional. And when we show up, the officers in plain clothes, because we know that for some, the uniform will actually trigger people into further crisis. So eliminating the uniform and building the relationships there. Um, and getting the person, the assistance that they need. Because many times, you know, at least in my career, um, we didn't have any place to take people, so we put them in jail. And that's not the place where they need to be. Um, so we are, we're working hard, um, to serve that population. And I believe Akron is as well. And Coach, again, if I'm selected be the next chief of police, I promise you, we will continue to build those relationships with the nonprofit organizations and all of the mental health professionals. Um, so we can together provide the services that are needed. Now I know I've probably taken up most of my two minutes. So if you will bear with me a little bit, I want to thank all of you, the Akron community, uh, for allowing my colleagues and I to spend some time with you today and present ourselves to you. I am applying for the position of chief of police for personal and professional reasons. Professionally, I think there's a lot of opportunity, um, to continue to build upon the successes of the city of Akron. Akron is leaning into some really heavy issues and conversations. The Reimagining Steering Committee, um, the Racial Equity and Social Justice Task Force. There's a lot of exciting things that are occurring and are coming down the pike. I know that, that last group is gonna be reporting out in December and I'd like to be part of that. Um, during my adult life, my faith and my values have guided me in my personal and professional life. If given the opportunity to serve as your next chief of police, I will work hard to earn your trust and confidence. I am ready to lead you, the men and women of, of the Akron Police Department. I've got a lot of experience, but it, things need to be customized to the needs of Akron. Um, and I've successfully done that in two, in two different organizations. So okay, Coach.
Thank you Chief. Appreciate, I think, I appreciate the chief. Deputy Commissioner Sullivan, closing thoughts.
I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna stay at two minutes, so I'm gonna roll.
Thank, I appreciate that.
As the, as the chief of homeland security, the, the one thing that I was very proud of is how we use the principles of de-escalation and work, how we work so closely with mental health officials to literally resolve hundreds of crises without any use of force or a very minimal use of force and no use of deadly force. I believe in those principles. I've, I've lived those principles and I promoted those principles. And when I was promoted deputy commissioner, I brought those principles to thousands of officers in the patrol division and made them see too that, 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 that does work. And then partnerships with the mental health, partnerships with homeless services, partnerships with, with the, with, with social services, providing assistance to, uh, substance, uh, uh, dependent populations. These are things that work. The police want its help. We've always wanted its help. We're glad to get it. The alternative response models are, are the future and they should be the future. There has to be a multi-cured response. Because as one of my colleagues said, we're always gonna have police officers that are gonna be the first one to encounter someone with a mental health, uh, having a mental health crisis. And they have to have the skills to do no harm. But they also have to have the resources that they can call. They have to have the training to do no harm. So, and, and, and also, you know, as Chris said, it's important to make sure that that officer is also, you know, someone who has personal wellness, because they have a department that has supported that and ensured that, that, that they were prepared to deal with a situation like that. So again, I say to you, thank you Coach. And I hope that if I am so lucky as to become the next chief of the Akron Police Department, that Coach will be there to support me and to advise me. Um, as well as the, the, the larger community in Akron and Mayor, thank you, and members of city council, members of the police department in Akron and citizens of Akron, thank you for the opportunity, uh, you've given me here to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chief Hawkins.
Well, thank you. And, and much like the other panelists talked about, you know, uh, you know, crisis intervention training is, is extremely important. You know, we get our officers, our recruits at, at the very outset in the academy. They get this training. So this, so this whole awareness of this issue is instilled in, in our recruits at a, at a very early stage of their career. And this is continuing education as well. And you know, we've got mobile crises, we, um, you know, we, but, but one of the more, most important things, I think the most impactful thing that's happening, uh, with us, and that will happen in Akron, because Akron is going through a similar path with this, is the police, uh, reform and collaboration movement. Because I know in Albany, one of the recommendations from our community that's codified now in this document is that, uh, we look at how we handle mental health in a different way. That, uh, that we have an awareness that there's been some harm and some trauma that's been inflicted on, on individuals who are under mental health crises over the years by police officers. And it's not because police officers are bad. It's not that they were trying to do the wrong thing. It's just that, uh, you know, these are very volatile situations. And can we have less contact between officers and individuals who are under a mental health crises? And so we're in the process right now of developing plans with our community. You know, it, it's important when we're doing things like this, that we don't impose a, a strategy on our community. It, it, especially our mental health community with, with something like this, that we do this in collaboration. And we're doing it the right way. And Akron is doing it the right way. And so I think as we move forward, um, working with the community through these re, re, uh, reform collaboration plans is going to help us out tremendously as it pertains to addressing issues of mental health and substance abuse and homelessness and some of these other social problems that we're dealing with. And, um, and, and as we close, you know, I, I too thank the, uh, members of the Akron community, the elected officials. Uh, Coach, um, we thank you for all you've done, um, tonight. Um, I enjoyed listening to my panelists. There's some extremely talented, uh, individuals that are being considered, uh, for, uh, this chief's position in, in Akron. And, and it's an honor to be a part of, of this process, uh, amongst these talented, uh, individuals. And not to say that, um, it, to me, as we move into this new chapter in law enforcement, because Deputy Chief Davis said it, I, I think he was spot on, uh, we are at a pivotal point. Um, what we're seeing right now is much different than anything that I've seen in my thirty-plus years in law enforcement. You know, we, you know, I've been through the, the Rodney Kings and some of these other major incidents involving police and, and members of our community. But this, there's a, there's a momentum, uh, with this change that is unlike anything that I've ever seen. And so change is coming. And so the question is, what type of leaders do we want in these organizations to help the, our communities navigate this change? And when I say community, I mean the people who reside in those communities and our officers. We have some great officers in our place, officers who want to do the right thing. And so it's incumbent upon us as leaders to help our officers understand that reform and reimagination and transforming, those are not bad words. You know, it's, it's just the natural evolution of change that.
And I'm gonna leave you right there. I'm gonna leave right there Chief Hawkins. That was a great close. I will stop you right there. Sorry to have to cut you off, but I, I do have to turn it back over to Ellen at this time. And so again, thank you all so much for your time and also your answers.
Thank you Coach.
Thank you Coach Boyd, and thank you very much to each of our candidates for sharing your time and perspective with us this evening. Uh, finally, thank you so much to all of our viewers at home and to those of you who submitted questions. And we've been talking all night about the importance of listening to the community. And we hope that tonight was just the beginning of a relationship between our future chief of police and the Akron citizens. So if you have any feedback about tonight's event, um, we ask that you would please email that to APDChiefSearch@AkronOhio.gov. Or you can call the Mayor's Action Center at S three three oh, three seven five, two three one one. And for anyone who's engaging with us on social media, you can share your reactions with the hashtag APDChiefSearch. Uh, on behalf of Mayor Dan Horgan and all of us here at City Hall, thank you and have a safe evening. This concludes our live stream of the Akron Police Chief Community Town Hall.
Going to be asking the questions, join us for a battle of the dads. Stay with us. What's new starts right now.
And now, live from WKYC Studios, this is What's New.
Hi Northeast Ohio, thank you so much for joining us this afternoon. Happy Friday Eve, that's what we'd love to call Thursday. Jay and I have had such a busy day already.
We've already ridden the steel vengeance. That was so fun.
Yeah, you'll get to hear more about Cedar Point tomorrow. And that being said, tomorrow is gonna be a very interesting weather day too. We have some thunderstorms that we have to talk about. Matt Standridge is in, he will give us the lowdown and give us timing on what could be a pretty big evening for us.
All right, we'll wait very anxiously to hear from that. Uh, in the meantime, great to be with you again Northeast Ohio. Uh, gorgeous day and yeah, we're gonna talk more about that Cedar Point thing. It was a blast. But we begin today at five with Governor Mike Dwyane announcing that he will lift the COVID state of emergency. He's gonna do that tomorrow. We also announced that residents at nursing homes and assisted living facilities will be allowed to now have more than two visitors at a time and scheduling no longer required.
So many families happy about that. Well, this comes as we continue to see our daily COVID cases decline. Our twenty-one day average is now down to three ninety-six and the number of people fully vaccinated in Ohio is up to forty-two percent.
Vaccines have been a highly debated topic. You know that by now. Many companies across the country are requiring employees to get the vaccine and now one the country are requiring employees to get the vaccine. And now one local company is doing that as well.
A former employee at Malle's Chocolates told Three News's Monica Robbins, the company is now requiring the employees to get the vaccine or they may be fired. Obviously Monica joins us now on this. This is a hot topic. There's a lot of folks that are keeping an eye on the precedent that's being set with this. So is this legal?
Well, let me get to that in a second. Let me explain to you what we know, what we know first. Yeah. Brianna Sherfy says she left Malle's a couple of months ago for a few reasons, but the vaccine mandate was definitely the one that pushed her out the door. I spoke briefly this morning to Mike Malle, who declined to discuss the company policy, but I also spoke with two current employees who confirm they are required to be vaccinated and all new hires are too. Now Sherfy provided me with a company email that outlined the policy that said employees must either establish that they've received the vaccine or obtain an approved exemption. Those who did not comply within 15 days of that mid-May notice risked losing their job.
It's a little scary to think, would I be losing my job if I wasn't vaccinated? Would I be laid off? And that was one of the things I do remember in the email was if you weren't vaccinated, you would be at a leave of absence until you were either set with an appointment or you were vaccinated, which I thought was very, you know, not fair.
So Sherfy declined to be on camera, but did allow me to use her name and voice. She is unvaccinated currently, but says she would have had no issue with the mandate if the vaccine was FDA approved. When that happened, she says that's when she'll be getting vaccinated. But she also understands why Malle's did this because safety is a priority for the company and this mandate applies to employees and vendors alike.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay. Now, we've spoken before with our resident attorney. Stephanie, of course, is a lawyer. And I know this is tricky space, but is this legal? At the end of the day, it is legal.
It is definitely legal. Yeah. Malle's email also followed the law. So according to the Ohio State Bar Association, the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, the EEOC, the guidance says employers can require their employees to receive the COVID-19 vaccine, but employers must make exceptions for employees' religious and disability accommodations in accordance with the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the Americans with Disabilities Act, and the Ohio Civil Rights Act. And you can bet a lot more companies will begin doing this, especially after that vaccine gets FDA approval. But there's still a lot of questions because people want to know, well, can I sue my employer if I had an adverse reaction? And the question is, we don't know yet. Sure, anybody can sue for anything, but whether or not that lawsuit is going to be successful is a whole other question. We are definitely in uncharted territory right now. Wow, something to watch for sure. I know there's a lot of eyeballs on it, including yours. Appreciate it. Thanks, Monica.
Thanks, Monica.
Well, now on your feet at five, in exactly two weeks, expired driver's licenses in Ohio will no longer be valid. Now, remember when those, the, the COVID restrictions started up? Well, the expired licenses have been allowed by the Ohio BMV since March of last year after an emergency law was signed at the height of the pandemic. COVID caused BMVs to close statewide for months. So Governor Dewine signed House Bill 404. That gave folks more time to renew their driver's licenses and plates, temp tags, ID cards, and get an e-check. Well, Dewine signed the law to limit the number of people who crowded into the BMV, which would help to cut down on COVID exposure. That extension will be up on July 1st. The BMV says, whatever you do, don't wait till the last minute.
Probably about 400,000 individuals still have not renewed that license or registration and have taken advantage of that deadline. So those 400,000 folks will have to come in on top of our, you know, normal close to million customers a month. So we're going to be, see a very busy July, busy June.
You heard that right. 1,400,000 people are going to be getting in line at the BMV. Now pack your patience. The closer it is to that July 1st deadline, chances are, the longer you're going to have to wait. The grace period only applies to drivers whose licenses, licenses expired between March 9th of last year and April 1st of this year. I find that so interesting. And I do want to point out and let everybody know, you can get in line online.
Oh, that, well, that's great.
The BMV website, they have a little spot where you click on it and you can get in line online. Saves a lot of time.
That is definitely a time saver. All right. Yet another mall operator is facing difficulty as a result of the pandemic. The owners of Great Lakes Mall filed for bankruptcy, leaving many wondering what the future holds for the mall there. Brandon Simmons spoke to city leaders who are confident in what the future holds.
People are back in stores and states are well on the way back to normal, but businesses that have suffered over the last year are still hurting. Just days ago, Washington Prime Group, the owners of Great Lakes Mall and Mentor filed for Chapter 11 bankruptcy as many have been forced to do. City leaders say they got a heads up.
We were aware of it long before the announcement was made. We have actually been in close contact with many of the representatives from Washington Prime.
Based on those conversations, city manager Kenneth Filippiac believes the mall is here to stay, one of the hallmark locations under the Washington Prime umbrella.
Some businesses come and some go, but the, the attraction to the mentor market has remained. And that'll continue because it's a great environment in which to do business.
In a statement, Washington Prime Group said in part, "It's business as usual at Great Lakes Mall." Continuing, "The company has determined that the Chapter 11 path is the most effective step to resolve the company's outstanding indebtedness as we emerge from the pandemic," end quote. The Mentor area has served as a hub for retail in northern Ohio for years, boasting an overall 92% occupancy rate of retail establishments, including the mall, a number that didn't fluctuate much during the pandemic.
Retail isn't going anywhere. Certainly, the pandemic changed a lot of people's habits and it will take some time for those to, to come back.
By restructuring company...